Okay, today is July 15th. It is 4:00 PM. We can go ahead and get started with our regular city commission meeting. If I could go ahead and get the call to order, my roll call. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Shirley.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Householder.
Here.
Okay, all of those who are able to, if we could stand and do the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to the citizen forum, I just want to mention that Relay for Life was over the weekend and they did raise $90,000, which I think is extraordinary. My dad was recently diagnosed with cancer, so I've been pretty hardcore on cancer research and Relay for Life and that kind of stuff lately, so it's great that our community came together for that particular event. I just wanted to throw that out there real quick. The money raised, the community coming together, it was pretty amazing. Now we go into our citizen forum. If anyone would like to approach the commission on anything that's not on today's agenda, please feel free to do so.
I'm Dr. Trent Davis, address 2145 Hillside Drive, and current chairperson of the Salina-Saline County Health Department, and I would like to read a letter to you dated July 12th. Whereas by Joint Resolution Number 1576 dated July 28th, 1955, the governing bodies of Saline County, Kansas, and the City of Salina, Kansas declared their determination that the public health and sanitation of the county and city would be best promoted by the creation of a joint board of health and created and established a joint city-county board of health, all in accordance with KSA 65-205. And whereas by Joint Resolution Number 13-7019, the City of Salina, Kansas declared their intent to withdraw from the agreement with Saline County, Kansas relating to the joint Salina-Saline County Board of Health and the City-County Health Department pursuant to the Joint Resolution, with the potential of entering into an inter-local cooperation agreement prior to year end. And whereas Saline County Commission has indicated their desire not to enter into discussion with the Salina City Commission concerning an inter-local relationship with the Saline County and Salina, and therefore the Salina-Saline County Board of Health asks, A, the Saline County Commission and Salina City Commission work to establish an inter-local agreement to take effect January 1st, 2014, that will re-establish the joint relationship with Saline County and City of Salina in governing the Salina-Saline County Health Department. B, that Saline County, City of Salina, and Health Department appoint representatives that will work together through a rational process to identify an appropriate and optimal location for the Salina-Saline County Health Department. I respectfully submit this on behalf of the Board of Health. It should be noted that the representatives that would be appointed to work on this committee of sorts need not be commissioners, with all due respect, perhaps maybe shouldn't be commissioners, but certainly should include, you know, those persons in the city and county with the technical expertise and knowledge on matters such as buildings and finance and budgets and employees, those things which will be important beyond just an edifice that will shape the function, you know, finances and location of the Health Department. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
I don't have any questions. I appreciate the time you've took with this. I know we're still working on the back and forths for a rational process. I defer to local council on going farther on answering this.
This is just...
Or commenting on it.
And this is just an official request that you can consider not giving up the ship at this point in time.
Right.
There is still a goal out there that can be reached.
I personally haven't given up.
Commissioners, it may just be helpful to reiterate a position you've already taken, which even when we provided our proposal to Saline County and also when you took the action to provide the notice, we wanted to emphasize, you wanted to emphasize as a governing body that you felt the timing was such that you needed to provide that notice, but everyone, every one of you are hopeful that there can be some type of resolution, some type of expectation of the ability to govern together with them into the future, and obviously our goal is still to get there, so I believe this fits right into the goal that you have with that, and I know that you've worked hard and we'll try to encourage you and encourage ourselves to keep working diligently and see what happens.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doctor Davis.
Thank you, Doctor.
Is there anybody else that would like to come up?
My name is John Bosin, 1373 Eagle Crest here in Salina. I come to you this afternoon to speak in opposition to the mandatory water fluoridation policy practiced by the City of Salina and object to its continuance. Two years ago, this September, College Station, Texas City Council voted to stop water fluoridation, and since then, cities in Calgary, Alberta, Canada, Kirkland Lake, Ontario, Canada, Cairns, Queensland, Australia, Santa Fe, and Albuquerque, New Mexico, Owen Walds and Spring Hill, Tennessee, Slave Lake, Alberta, and Ocatoks, Alberta, Canada, and Windsor, Ontario, Canada, the country of Israel, and the Dutch island country of Curacao in the Caribbean have voted to reduce, have voted to halt water fluoridation, so they had it in place and they stopped it. All these city, regional, or national councils ordered the end of water fluoridation. That's also our intention, to stop being forced against our will to ingest fluoride in Salina's public water. Prevention won by public vote against fluoride in 2011 in Amesbury, Massachusetts, and 2012 in Wichita, Kansas, and in 2013 in Portland, Oregon. We all know that an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, which means a little precaution before a crisis occurs is preferable to a lot of fixing up afterward. No one wants a crisis, so let's have an open discussion on the record with expert testimony. We want the issue of stopping water fluoridation scheduled on the agenda of the four o'clock meeting as soon as possible. Thank you.
Okay, now, John, here's what I've been thinking about, and I was gonna, I know several of you are here with the fluoride, so what I've talked about, and I was gonna ask my fellow commissioners what their opinion on this, what I'd like to do is either do like a town hall meeting or have like a mediator that can get both sides, you know, the pro-fluoride and the anti-fluoride. That way it's not all one-sided, hey, we want this, or hey, we don't want that. I think that might be the best, is to have the two sides and maybe do an allotment on a time. That way people aren't repeating themselves over and over on both sides.
That makes sense.
On the pros and the cons. And I don't know when we could do that. We have our budget that's due August 12th, and we're also working on the Health Department. I would like to go maybe into September on that, and I haven't spoke to any of the commissioners about that. That's just something that I've, you know, looking through emails and listening to you over the last couple of months, think that would be the best way to go about it maybe, or have our Health Department Board chime in on it as well. What do my fellow commissioners think of something like that? That way we get both sides, maybe have a mediator.
I'll kinda...
Not really a study session, but just everybody in on it.
Yeah, quickly, my position on it has been that I'll defer to staff on the water side as to what their participation is, but one of the things you mentioned about the Health Department, I'd like to maybe, have you contacted the Health Department and gone through any of that to help, have them help you provide information to us on that or to yourselves?
The Saline County Health Department?
Yeah.
Or Saline, Salina?
Well, I mean, if we're poisoning the population, they're the ones that kind of deal with disease control and so on.
If that in fact is true, then they should have documentation of some sort about fluoride poisoning directly, but our concern is the long-term systemic effects of fluoride damage, and that would not be something that would be easily measured by statistical statistical record-keeping.
Do you...
That's been demonstrated by the various experts we've brought in to Salina over the past several months.
I've been to a couple of the meetings, and so I can't say I've been to all of them and know what all the experts are saying, but the one, the one, the two meetings that I went to, there was a meta-analysis of 27 different studies done in China and Iran that were being put out as the experts, and so I'm just wondering, do you have any evidence that is local that you can provide to us early on that we may be able to look at and then determine whether, whether a study session is gonna provide? I think what we want to do is, and this may, this may be a scheduling thing more than anything else, but I think that what we definitely want to get to the bottom of is that if we do have a study session or that we do have something put on the agenda, that there is enough information there to make an informed decision on.
So you want the actual results of this town hall meeting to produce an outcome?
No, I don't, I was just addressing your request to have this put on the regular agenda at a four o'clock meeting.
Well, that would be precluded by this town hall meeting, I would assume.
Right.
So that would have to come later or might not even be necessary if it's, the evidence is presented sufficiently enough to convince the council to halt water fluoridation, then it becomes moot whether we have a meeting or not.
Well, I have been, I tell you what, I have been receptive, open, gone out of my way to a couple of meetings to get detailed information on how this affects Salina water, and I have, you guys have sent, as I said, studies from China, Iran. We hear all these different communities that have done this, but we haven't had anything specific to Salina other than the fact that when it was put into place and when it was voted on, et cetera. So I'm just saying, if I have a little more information, I'd probably say, yeah, let's go ahead and do a town hall, but I'd kinda want to have a little bit of information that I know that we're actually going somewhere with it, so.
I think it might be beneficial, at least from my perspective. I know that Portland just went through this process. They're a lot bigger than we are, and it would be interesting to me to know what their process was for reviewing the data. Did they have, yeah, or Wichita.
That's right, that's right next door.
Wichita would work as well, maybe to see how both communities dealt with the issue and how they arrived at the decisions that they made, so that we don't have to reinvent the wheel perhaps.
Right, and make it at a time where more, not at four o'clock necessarily, but, you know, we're not paid by the hour. We get a certain amount and make it so people can actually come to the meeting after they get off work.
And we've had interest expressed in having a meeting other than during the day.
Exactly, and on both sides too, not just the anti-fluoride, but the pro-fluoride too, keep it to a minimum of, you know, maybe five minutes per person. That way it's not a six-hour meeting, and that way everyone in the community can be more involved, get educated on both sides, and I just think that, I think that would be in the best interest, honestly. Kay, and Erin, what do you think of having something like that where the community can be more involved and, like I said, hearing from both sides is always good, not just have a one-sided meeting, which I think, you know, unfortunately, that happens a lot, and not just this situation and other situations where it's just one-sided.
Well, I mean, I guess I would echo what John said, if there's maybe a little bit more justification for a public meeting, but I just have not seen it, and I would point out that College Station, College...
College Station, Texas.
Yeah, the reason they did away with it is because they already have a high concentration of fluoride in their water. It's not that they have zero fluoride, they just made a judgment call and said, look, we've got a high rate of fluoride. They've lowered the standards of what they think fluoridation should be. We imagine people through their daily lives will make enough of a difference. So a lot of times when you come in here, you kinda give us these half facts, and that's what makes me feel like there's just not enough here to justify it. And so, short of going through all the other processes of the Health Department and bringing me a little bit more than the Iran-China conspiracy and cities that are doing away with fluoride because they already have...
I don't believe I've mentioned either of those two countries in my presentation just...
Well, not today, but it's been constantly coming from the Salina Cares Group, but I just think short of that, you know, I can't see dedicating valuable study session time to that now. I suppose if we have a opening somewhere down the future where we don't have something more pertinent, you know?
That's why I said town hall meeting, not a study session.
I wonder what the cost involved in that is, what's that usually end up?
Well, Commissioners, it all depends on what you want to do. Yeah, I would, first of all, agree that it makes sense to have a forum that would allow folks from any perspective to share that perspective with you. It may be in this room, it may not be, depends on the anticipated crowd.
Right, 'cause we've talked about having town hall meetings throughout the year, you know, for other situations. So is one issue more important than the other issue, and these are all our constituents, and I think everybody should be heard.
I think, I think that you would definitely want to have a special meeting date and time for that, because you won't, if you, and I think the mayor alluded to this as well, but if you have it at your typical Monday at four, you're not gonna get anything else done, so you'll definitely have that.
Right.
So I think that's a pretty good idea, if you want to have that. The difficulty of it all is, is that you will hear a lot of information from a lot of different people, and you will not be in a position to determine if that information is valid and correct or not.
Right.
And I think if you go in knowing that, that's okay. I would tell you from my perspective, I have a master's degree and I've had research methods class, and I haven't, don't have enough research experience to be able to put two pieces of research down in front of me and tell you which one's flawed and which one is not, and so I'm not gonna be able to help you very much on that, and I'm not sure who will. So I think that's something to take into consideration, and that's primarily, I think, why we kind of default to the Environmental Protection Agency, Health and Human Resources, CDC, and those larger organizations with regards to just simply helping us decide what's healthy and what's not. So part of it may be simply to entertain, go ahead and entertain the request, entertain the perspectives and so forth. I'm just not sure what you're gonna be able to grab onto out of it, but if you'd like to do that, we can at any time work to set up that special meeting, whether it be here or wherever it would be, if that's what you'd like to do.
I guess I don't want to say no to one town hall meeting and then say yes to three other town hall meetings. I don't, I don't think that's fair, and I don't think it really...
Well, you could have a million town hall meetings then. You could be opening the door.
I know, but I know you guys have said several times you want to start having town hall meetings, so it's kind of hypocrisy when you don't do one, but you're willing to do others. Kay, what's your thoughts?
Well, I'm open to anything the rest of the commission wants to do.
Listening to people is all I'm saying. I want to listen to both sides.
Right, I remember the big controversy there was when it was first passed, that we put fluoride in our water, and I remember all of that. So I'm open to most anything that the commission wants to do and would attend to town hall meeting. I do have some, probably I'm a little reticent about the whole thing because I do think Health and Human Services, I do tend to believe what they're telling us and CDC, but certainly I'd be willing to look at all issues.
And I think if, like I said, we can do it in a timely manner, do it at a decent time in the evening, keep it to a minimum of how long each person talks, that way we're not there all night. I think, I think it would be good to hear both sides and let people actually speak out on it.
We have an expert from Lawrence who would probably like to have more than five minutes.
Right.
Dr. Albert Bergstaller, who has been to Salina before and was in, at the meeting at the library and all, the commission was invited.
Was that, was that on a Monday night?
Is he gonna give more than he gave at the meeting that I went to?
He was not feeling well, so...
Because that wasn't, okay.
He was not feeling well, and he has actually produced a class for the students at KU Chemistry that would relate specifically to this and deal with some of the issues that you're raising and some of, answer some of the objections.
Right. Well, John, I'll talk to the commissioners a little bit more about it. It sounds like the majority of us would like to listen to more about on each side. It's just how to get the date and maybe a mediator to kind of facilitate the whole thing.
Facilitate it, sure.
Maybe Dr. Davis.
I wouldn't call it a mediator. I really hope, I really hope that mediator's not gonna become part of our regular...
I understand what she's planning at, that's fine. You may not already be aware...
On something controversial, you'll want somebody that's a...
About a host.
Right.
A host, there you go, a host.
Host. You also might want to pay attention to the dilemma they're facing in Abilene because of the corrosion of their equipment used to deliver fluoride that's caused them to shut down their, their system because it's unsafe for the people to go into the room, so, and that color picture of that...
And is that something from their actual water department that was released?
That's, yes, ma'am. That is from Abilene, and they're not happy about it, and that's making the rounds all over the world, so everybody knows about it. So that same thing can hap, could be happening here. We've been to the water department, we see how the fluoride powder is put into the system, seems to be intact and operated in an efficient manner, and we appreciate the efficiency of the water department. I'm a firm believer in not doing anything well that shouldn't be done at all, so my opinion, fluoridation should stop.
Right.
So sooner the better. So when can we expect to hear when a date would be set for this meeting?
Like I said, I would hope sometime, maybe end of September. Like I said, with the budget and the Health Department that we have right now, definitely not before August 12th, because we are in the middle of the budget.
That's fine.
So that's, that would be impossible.
I would even suggest, if you're gonna put together some kind of a meeting, that it be even after September, because kids going back to school, it's always an extremely busy month.
There's never gonna be a good time to talk about this, I guarantee you.
Well, maybe not. No, I'll get with Mr. Gage and Mr. Binkston this afternoon and see if we can maybe pinpoint a week, not the actual date, but at least a week to get back with you.
We appreciate that.
And maybe you can come back next Monday and we can have a firmer date, 'cause it's putting me on the spot off the top of my head, it's like, I don't know.
I really wasn't prepared to continue to this degree in this conversation at this time anyway, so I also...
Right, I have, you know, at least I have a, you know, I'm open to the town hall meeting and, you know, wanting to do this. I just don't have a date quite yet.
Thank you.
Thank you, John, thank you.
Just a side note, Commissioners too, I think part of that will be the facility, and I might be safe to presume we're not, we'll outgrow this room, I don't know, but if we presume that, we'll need to, when we think of a range of the dates, we'll need to try to work that out with whatever the, the location of the facility would be and see if it fits, but...
And I can help try to locate a facility. I used to do that for a living, so.
This room could be big enough.
This room could be big enough, but if we don't want to pay people to have to stick around this room, might be able to find somewhere else, that would be willing to do it at no charge. Is there anybody, thank you again, John.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to approach the commission on anything that's not on today's agenda? All right, we'll go ahead and go on to awards and proclamations.
Item 4.1, the week of July 21st through 27th, 2013, as Rebecca A. Morrison House Week in the City of Salina, Tom Martin, Salina Regional Health Foundation Executive Director, will read the proclamation.
Tom Martin, 1871 Overlook Drive. Proclamation of the City of Salina, Kansas, whereas the Rebecca A. Morrison House, 513 South 8th Street, was established November 24th, 1993, to serve as a home away from home for people from outside Salina who have a loved one as a patient in Salina Regional Health Center. And whereas the Morrison House is celebrating its 20th year of operation in 2013, having served approximately 20,000 guests and provided more than 68,000 nights of accommodations, and whereas these guests have come from 443 different Kansas communities, 48 states, and 18 foreign countries, and whereas the Morrison House is supported entirely through contributions so that guests are not charged a fee, and whereas the National Association of Hospital Hospitality Houses has proclaimed the week of July 21st to July 27th to be National Hospital Hospitality House Week in the United States of America, I Barbara V. Shirley, Mayor of the City of Salina, do hereby proclaim the week of July 21st to July 27th to be Rebecca A. Morrison House Week, to recognize and celebrate the care and hospitality provided through the Rebecca A. Morrison House.
I have your signed proclamation up here, and I think things like this are wonderful, and I think a lot of people don't realize these kind of things are available. I said earlier at the beginning of the meeting, with a relative that just got diagnosed with terminal cancer, I know how important places like this are for family members that are traveling and can't afford $120 a night to stay in a hotel, so this, these kind of things are great.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming up and speaking.
We are having a open house celebration this Friday from 10:00 to 11:30, and the public's invited, so...
Fantastic.
Thank you.
And I, here, I was writing that down on the timeline. We have no public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, so we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of July 8th, 2013. Item 6.2, authorize the mayor to sign a Kansas Department of Transportation Local Off-System Bridge Funding Request for the Greeley Avenue Bridge, Project Number 08-2709.
Is there anything a commissioner would like to strike from the agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And it looks like I do have an ordinance, let's see, is this part of my amendment on the agenda that I just have up here? Ordinance number 13-10696?
That's the revised ordinance for...
That would be under item 8.2.
Okay, okay, that's not on here then.
I can explain that when 8.2 comes up.
Okay, great, thank you. I just noticed it over here, that wasn't a part of my regular packet. All right, motion passes five to zero. We have no development business, we'll move on to administration.
Item 8.1, second reading, ordinance number 13-10695, amending the future land use map of the Salina Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use designation along the south side of West Crawford Street, east of Centennial Road, from future suburban retail, residential, to future commercial.
Okay, second reading of the ordinance. Since that time, no comments have been received. I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number 13-10695 on second reading.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Blanchard?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Mayor Shirley?
Aye. Motion passes five zero on that ordinance.
Item 8.2, second reading, ordinance number 13-10696, changing the zoning district classification from C-5 and unzoned road right-of-way to PC-5 to allow construction of a new expanded quick-shop convenience store on the south side of West Crawford Street between Willow Drive and Centennial Road.
Now can you explain the amendment?
I'll explain why. You have one thing in your packet and a separate thing there. In consultation with Mr. Binkston, it was believed to be helpful to incorporate the findings in support of the decisions that you did make in terms of approving aspects of the quick-shop plan and those that you did not. So the handout that you have at your places there incorporates the findings in support of a right-in, right-out driveway design, the findings in support of an exception to allow right-of-way to be used for front yard landscaping, and addresses the driveway widths, and then as noted there, you did not make findings in support of the 70-foot sign, so that section's been modified to read as 50. But the only difference between what you have in your packet and what you have there is that the findings that were made in support of your actions last week have been incorporated into the ordinance for second reading.
So when I do my motion, I do need to say also with the amendment on here, to allow the maximum sign?
With the, all it would be, this ordinance on second reading, which just incorporates the findings that you made last week.
Okay, great. Is there any comments from the public on this one? Okay. Ordinance number 13-10696 was passed on the first reading on July 8th, 2013. Since that time, no comments have been received. Section 3.1B of the ordinance has been amended to allow the maximum sign height of 50 feet. I would go ahead and entertain a motion on this ordinance.
Mayor, I'd move that we adopt ordinance number 13-10696. Mayor, I'd move that we adopt ordinance number 13-10696. Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance on the second reading, can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Blanchard?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Mayor Shirley?
Aye. On to item 8.3.
8.3, second reading, ordinance number 13-10703, changing the zoning district classification from PC-1 to R2, and Quell Meadows Edition Number 3.
Ordinance number 13-10703 was passed on first reading on July 8, 2013, since that time, no comments have been received. Is there anyone here today that would like to comment on this one? CNN, I would entertain a motion on the second reading of this ordinance.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt on second reading, ordinance number 13-10703.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Blanchard?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Mayor Shirley?
Aye. Do you believe we have an executive session request?
Formulating it.
Okay, while our gentlemen are formulating their executive session requests, we have any other business any commissioner would like to address or talk about?
You know, while we have a second, I'll just mention that as well as a Relay for Life, there was a fully accessible playground being built over at Coronado School, and there was about 400 people there, a group of Lady Ambucks, the A.M. Ambucks, and the Breakfast Band at Ambucks were instrumental, but there were a lot of community groups that showed up, and it was a really neat deal. I think a lot of kids are not only gonna be able to play on a playground now that if they're, have disabilities, they're gonna be able to do that now, but the children that are their friends are gonna be able to play alongside of them, so. I think it was a really neat deal, I think it was a great community project, it was really a neat deal, so.
Yeah.
A big, big, big hand to all the volunteers that showed up over the weekend.
Yeah, definitely, and on that same note, the same morning, at the same time, we had our Special Olympics tennis tournament, and we had about 100 people show up for that one, and I had the pleasure of playing a gentleman named Bob that works at Carlos O'Kelly's, and he slaughtered me. I managed to hit a couple of them back, but the rest was duck and run, so. That was, it sounds like we had a good weekend here in Salina with our Special Olympics, our playground, and our Relay for Life. Good to y'all.
All right, well, Madam Mayor, I move that, I move to recess and do executive session for 60 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and we convene at 5:35.
Second.
I'm sorry, if I may, Commissioner, that was intended to refer to both of the starred categories, we have a, kind of a combined circumstance here, and that time referred to the combined-
To the combined, okay, let me add to that, and I'll move my thumb so I see the other star here. Additionally, I move to recess and do executive session, included in the 60 minutes, to discuss confidential data related to the financial affairs and trade secrets of a corporation for the reason that public discussion of the information would competitively disadvantage the corporation, and again, reconvene at 5:35.
Second.
Do we expect any action?
No, we do not.
No action taken today? Have a motion and a second to go into executive session, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We're now in executive session. See everybody in one hour.